All right. Stand still.
The call to Finance and Law Subcommittee to Order, it's Wednesday, October 21st, 2020. Roll call, Mr. Souza.
Present.
Mr. Fiori.
Present.
And myself, Mr. Martin is present. Also in attendance, we have Superintendent Cabral and Assistant Superintendent Monahan. Three items on the agenda this evening. The first one is bills payable for FY21 in the amount of $982,104.74. Mr. Souza.
Thank you Chairman Martin, I just have a question. Ms. Monahan, welcome. How are you?
Thank you. I'm good, thank you. How are you?
Good, thank you. On page 15, on the REEDS Collaborative for $253,575. So could you explain what that one is? That seems to be like a big ticket on this one.
It is. It is for 18 students that are at the REEDS Collaborative, and that is their entire first quarter tuition.
So each one of those line items is one student, and that's the tuition. And when you say first quarter, you're talking three months?
Correct.
Four, three months?
Three months, yes.
So $12,000 a month. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, Mr. Souza, $12,000 a quarter.
Quarter.
Sorry, $12,000 a quarter. Thank you. Three months, correct.
Somebody's listening.
I was going from month to quarter and didn't catch myself. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the bills payable warrant in the amount of $982,104.74 as presented.
I'll second it.
Mr. Fiori has seconded it. And any further discussion? I don't see any hands. So I'll call a roll, Mr. Fiori.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
And myself, I vote yes. Second item on the agenda is a donation, and it's from, as I'm looking at it, Plymouth Pro Diety, in the amount of $2,000.
If I could.
Go ahead, Mr. Cabral is going to call on you, and Ms. Monahan to explain the situation.
Yeah, if you don't mind Brenda, I'll take this one because they reached out to me. So Plymouth Pro Diety reached out to my office to mention that they had raised funds to support districts with their COVID-19 efforts. So we received a check in the amount of $2,000, which they asked what we would be using the funds for. I told them that we would be using the funds to help offset costs for the PPE purchases for our students.
Very good. And I see, and I see we've sent a letter of appreciation.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I just have a comment. It's a very nice thing that someone in the community is doing that for us. I was going to ask all of those questions. I'm glad you explained it because I was curious what the funds, if they had earmarked, if they decided to earmark the funds to us, but I think that's a great, a great choice for the use of the funds is that PPE for our students. Thank you.
It's great that a healthcare provider has reached out to do this.
Yep.
Yes. Motion is in order to receive and place on file.
So moved.
The motion is made second. Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
And myself, I vote yes. And again, thank you for that donation. Third item is facilities update. Ms. Monahan, you look like you're bouncing out of your seat with a facilities update. Turn your mic on.
Sorry about that. Yes, it is my favorite thing to do. So for the facilities update, Mulcahy Elementary School is about 97% completed for construction. They are in the building doing punchless and fixing up things as technology and other items. Furniture deliveries have been made and other things that are just being fixed. It could be some fixing of parts or of equipment that has been broken. And so we're pretty much underway to a full, beautiful school. In addition to it, we do begin our hybrid beginning on Monday with our students. So we've started to up the ante of all of the items for PPE for our students. And also what we also did too is we started to go ahead and provide air purifiers for classrooms as well to make sure that we have a safe environment for our students and staff.
Any questions? I have a couple. The 3% that we're lacking on the completion of Mulcahy School, I'm assuming that's the odds and ends that you talked about?
And some of the things too is also the parking lot, the rest of the landscaping, things that are happening. It's just the last of the few items left.
Okay.
So some of those are next year, correct? What's it?
There are, yes, there are parts of the, of the construction is, they're in phases, and one of them is the playground. But right now, one of the big things too is that we are about to, to do the rest of the parking lot and the buses too. In addition to, I just want to let you know that we do have the Totten Alternative High School. The roof project has been complete, and they are doing a survey tomorrow night with making sure that everything looks nice and tight with drones. And the other thing too is Galligan will be, we've put in for the MSBA, and we are doing for their windows and door project. And they will be, the MSBA will be surveying the site of Galligan with drones as well. So we, we are definitely high tech now, as the MSBA will be surveying the two schools. One, of course, looking at Galligan, the MSBA, and the Alternative High School because of the roof project to make sure that everything is sealed correctly.
Yeah, even on the roof of the Alternative High School, you can see the entire city from up there. Why do we need a drone?
I, you go ahead and do that. I'll stay on the ground. Thank you.
All right. My other question is on these air purifiers, are we talking about selective classrooms or all classrooms?
So we did do selective classrooms. What we did is we had an engineering company come through all of our buildings and did an air measurement test in all of our classrooms. So then what happened was if there is, so we also brought in a consultant that helped us out, Dr. Joseph Allen out of Harvard, who also works with the CDC and Dr. Fauci, and has made recommendations for the air exchange rate per hour, which is called ACH. What he did say is that the, a good air exchange rate is about four air exchange rates per hour. And currently, all of our HVAC systems that are in our schools are really just made or are supposed to be only doing about two air exchange rates per hour. So what's happening is when we did receive our, our reports back, we went ahead and surveyed and identified all the classrooms that had less than four air exchange rates per hour. And for those classrooms, we went and ordered air purifiers and we are delivering them into the classrooms now. And we should have them all in place by the first week of November.
Very good. Mr. Cabral, are you going to address that during your superintendent's report? Or the reason I'm asking is when we do Finance and Law Subcommittee Report, I'm going to ask Ms. Monahan to go through that process that she just went through, that procedure. I could write down every, every little word she was saying, and I don't understand some of the acronyms.
Yeah, during my presentation on hybrid update, I'll talk a little bit about the work that Mrs. Monahan has done in our facilities with the building, the partner, and some of our vendors.
So that will come up during your superintendent's report. Okay, thank you.
I dropped the hook.
I was just going to say.
What's that?
No, I was just going to say, I'm so puzzled at how, you know, during these times, they're using a lot of work that we would normally do in person. So I'm curious to see how the drones are going to be used to survey these buildings to identify the facility needs. So it's just interesting work. So something I just wanted to comment on.
Yeah. Well, if you get a chance, go up on the roof of, of the Alternative High School. It's quite, it's quite an experience. You can see a lot. Some you like seeing, some you don't like seeing. All right. Anything else for the good of the order in finance and law? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion made second to Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
And I vote yes also, and thank you very much for participating in your information.
Call the meeting to order. If you could do the prayer and the roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan.
Certainly. Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all, on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to the community and to the young people entrusted to our care. Okay, roll call. Ms. Doherty?
Present.
Mr. Palowski?
Present.
Mr. Fiori?
Present.
Mrs. Fagan's present. Mr. Martin?
Present.
Mrs. Almeida?
Present.
Mr. DeMello?
Present.
Mr. Souza?
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Present.
And we'd also, Mayor O'Connell, we have, would like to have a moment of silence for two former teachers in the Totten Public School System who passed away. First is Louis, well Louise Lachlan, but she was known as Luann Lachlan, a longtime third grade teacher at Bennett School. She, she also had been a teacher at the Ware Grammar School. My kids had her. Mr. Souza told me he had her, and then his son had her. My kids absolutely loved her. She was a wonderful teacher. So our condolences to her family. And to Jim Monahan, former business teacher at Totten High School, who was also president of the TEA, and I think one of the funniest men that ever lived, right, Mr. Martin?
Oh my gosh.
He was funny, and I believe it was also Ms. Monahan's boss, I mean colleague at one point. Yes?
Very, 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 very nice man, and he passed away this past week, I think.
He was also a member of the Romeos.
Oh, that, I thought he was one of your Romeos. So our condolences also to his family and fond remembrances from all of us for these two outstanding individuals. So a moment of silence, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Approval of the minutes from October 7th, 2020.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on discussion, Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, but on page seven, on the paragraph that starts, Mr. DeMello commended the superintendent. On the second sentence, I just want to elaborate that I said he also thanked our local government officials. They should read the local state delegation, and I also named the three reps Oral Head at Endority and Senator Pacico. So, and of course Governor Baker was correct. So if we can just amend that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello.
Side of the motion.
Motion made and seconded. On a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Fagan.
Yep. Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Thank you. And now we have the Student Council Representative Report from Aisling Campbell. Do you want to unmute yourself? Thank you.
Good evening, School Committee members and Mayor O'Connell. I'm Aisling Campbell, and I will be the Totten High School Student Council Representative this year. I want to start by discussing how the remote learning process is going. Our staff at Totten High is doing an outstanding job of communicating with our students. I find it very easy to contact my teachers with questions and concerns. Most teachers reply to emails in a matter of minutes. The programs being used are very helpful in the remote learning process. The teachers have worked very hard discovering replacements for activities we normally would do in person. All of our assignments are very organized and easy to find. It's also very helpful to be able to access my updated grades on School Brains. Overall, the remote learning plan is very well established. With all the changes throughout the world, one thing that still hasn't changed is the ability for students to be connected with the school. The fall sports season is occurring right now in a very safe manner. Students can enjoy practicing and playing games against other schools while maintaining COVID-19 guidelines. Along with all the clubs that are reaching out to the students of THS, clubs have been meeting over Google Meet and improvising with new techniques. The most significant thing is students having the ability to socialize and talk to their friends within each club. We have had, we had our first student council meeting two weeks ago today and have had three since. Emily O'Gara and Alana Tavarez intended a virtual workshop discussing mental health a few weeks ago. They were able to bring this back to our student council during our first meeting for us to spread to the students of THS. The following meeting, Bella Doyle and I introduced the amazing leadership opportunities that will be occurring virtually this year through C-Mask. We encourage students to join Student Council this year to become more involved in perfecting Totten High's social aspect through leadership skills. That will conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Aisling. Any comments?
Motion should accept the report.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. On a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Fagan.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes. Thank you. And Aisling, you are welcome to stay and hang out with us, but if you need to leave, please feel free to do that as well. Okay, Mr. Souza, if you could go read the public input statement, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. This is for the Wednesday, October 21st, 2020, virtual meeting of the Totten School Committee pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law section 30A18 in the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public meeting of the Totten School Committee is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this public meeting will be held remotely with no physical meeting location. Those seeking to provide public input should do so using the method listed below. The method, the meeting will be aired live via the Totten Educational Network, which is Comcast 19 and Verizon 23 in Totten. The meeting can also be viewed via a live stream at https://thstvstudio.vod.cas.tus.tv. A recording of the meeting will be made available on the aforementioned THSTV Studio Cactus website, as well as the Totten Educational Network YouTube channel, and http://www.youtube.com/c/THSTVStudio. It will also be rebroadcast multiple times on the Totten Educational Network cable channel. Public input via the phone during the meeting is 508, it's on your screen now, 508-821-1221. 508-821-1221. Leave a voicemail if necessary. Include your name and address for the record. This meeting will be recorded and posted on the Totten Public Schools website at www.tottenschools.org. We'll wait just a couple of minutes and see if anyone calls in. Do we have anybody who's on phone? Ms. Monahan, you on phone?
You betcha.
And do we have anybody right now?
I do. I have the first person, and she's ready to go, and I have somebody on hold.
Okay, madam, is it a male or female?
It's a female.
Okay, madam, if you could just remind me to say her name and address for the record, please.
Go ahead.
Yeah, it's Linda. Oh, thank you. Sorry, Brenda. It's Linda Rose, R-O-S-E, and I'm at 14 Briggs Street, B-R-I-G-G-S.
And go ahead.
So I'm just calling in regards to a big dilemma that we're having right now with non-payment of bus drivers on Wednesday. Of course, I'm calling because I am a bus driver. I had a long discussion with Greg DeMello in regards to this this past week. And him and I definitely picked up some key things, and I've got some more info. First of all, just so everyone knows, Totten Public School System is one of the only school system not paying bus drivers. At this point, we are basically essential employees. We've got at Bloom Alone, 46 large big bus drivers. We have about 80 van drivers. So you're looking at a large fleet, and you're asking people to stay working for our company without making the pay that they're used to making. So that's just from a personal level. I know Greg likes to use, DeMello likes to use the term services rendered. But in reality, the contract with Bloom, in Totten Public School, is to have Bloom having newer buses, which we have lived up to that part of the contract. We have cameras in our buses, which is part of the contract which we have lived up to. It involves maintenance. It involves mechanic. It involves now having drivers ready to take those buses when needed, loan, insurance. So when Mr. Bloom, Matt Bloom is asking for a lesser rate of 30%, it's based on covering the bus drivers and covering the basic overhead that he needs. I mean, he's not including the cost of PPE that Bloom Bus is paying for. I know everyone is doing this because this is the way of the world, but he's not including that. He really and truly is, is just trying to get his bus drivers paid for. I mean, he doesn't want to lose bus drivers because it is a national shortage for bus drivers to begin with. But then to have us not get paid what we usually are paid, it creates a bigger dynamic for him to be able to keep those SWAT bills. So I just wanted to reach out and kind of implore to the school committee, it's bigger than just paying them for a service. It's just bigger than saying that they received, you know, a grant. That grant was for payment of the payroll protection law, which he has paid us. That entire amount has been allocated to us as payroll. So in turn, I say, you know, there's been grants for transportation that has been budgeted for. So I'm not really quite sure why it's such a struggle to make this decision when us drivers are trying to keep our feet dug in and be there for our Totten School kids. We love our job. We love our kids. And this is the only gripe I think I've had in nine and a half years of being with the company.
Thank you. I just want to let everyone know that's listening that we don't respond to public input during the meeting. We'll have the administration respond as necessary. We'll wait for Ms. Monahan. I know she has another one.
Okay, Mr. Souza, your second call is ready to go. Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
More than five minutes, please.
Hi, my name is Vicky Falcone, and I live at 11 Watchmont Avenue, Totten, Mass. Just have a couple of questions. So every of the school system has already agreed to pay for the transportation grant that was already received for Totten. Why isn't that school bus drivers being picked for Wednesdays? This was appointed already for the budget. I just don't understand. Williams Guard rented buses for the Totten School Department. He's doing what he can. He's already paid us PPE. He's not looking for any one of us drivers to get paid because we're losing money. And I've been there for 20 years, and I love the company. So I, we just don't understand what's going on. I mean, every other system is getting schooled, you know, department's getting paid by us. And we really, you know, want it. Like I said, he's not asking for any more of anything, but he did pay us stuff for PPE, and he got new buses, everything, whatever's in the budget. We just need to get paid because if I start getting paid on Wednesday, I'm losing money. And we have to support our families. And what I understand is it was already appointed in the budget. That's just what I have to say.
Thank you, Vicky.
Thank you. What was your name again, Brenda? Because it was tough to hear her at the beginning. Just so Wendy has it.
I have the name, and I can, if you, it's Vicky Falcone. S-L-C-O-N-E. I have all the information noted, and I can share it with Wendy tomorrow.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Brenda. Is there, do you have anyone else?
As of right now, no.
And is there any more? Mr. Barata, I'm assuming there's no email public input, correct?
It is correct. We have no emails.
All right. I think we're all set, Madam Mayor, because the amount of time that these two people have taken would have been more than two or three minutes we would have waited. So I think we're all set.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. Okay, we will move on to the superintendent's report, Mr. Cabral.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So in your packet, I provided you with a two-page document that provides, that gives you an update on FY21 from the state level. And then on the backside, I also provided you with some updates from Commissioner Riley during a recent call. Then I have two talking points that I'll spend a little time talking about. I believe Aisling already talked a little bit about fall sports, so I won't go too deep into fall sports. And then I'll give you an update on STEM and Project Leadaway. So first, with the federal support and funding from the state's emergency reserves, the Baker Administration refiled the FY21 state budget. The refiled budget proposes spending approximately $45.5 billion, which is more than the original total presented in January before the COVID-19 pandemic devastated our economy. Experts are projecting a state tax revenue to come in lower than originally expected due to COVID-19. Most anticipate the deficit will be nearly $3.6 billion. Despite the lower tax revenue projection, the newly proposed budget will offset the deficit utilizing a combination of federal relief funding, Medicaid reimbursements, with the remaining balance coming from the state's rainy day fund, which will be using a portion, or they'll be using approximately $1.35 billion. The revised budget avoids any broad-based tax increases, layoffs, or cuts to social health and safety net programs. The new spending plan is being viewed as both conservative and realistic by many. Massachusetts is just one of four states in the country that does not have an FY21 budget in place. Originally, Governor Baker filed a $44.6 billion FY21 budget back in January 2020. At that time, tax revenues were projected to grow by 2.8%, projecting tax revenue to be approximately $31.1 billion for the new year. The administration is now forecasting that tax revenues will total $27.6 billion, again, $3.6 billion below those initial projections. If Congress provides Massachusetts with additional stimulus funding, the amount of funding drawn from the rainy day fund will most likely be adjusted. Unfortunately, the new proposed spending plan postpones, this is where it impacts school systems throughout the Commonwealth. Unfortunately, the newly proposed spending plan postpones implementing the Student Opportunity Act for one year. However, Chapter 70 was increased by approximately $108 million. As a result, Totten's Chapter 78 increased by $2.2 million. And the good news is that Circuit Breaker was funded at 70%. Normally, Circuit Breaker is funded at 75%, but to hear it's coming in at 70% is good news. And as a school board, we anticipated a 20% cut to Circuit Breaker. So those additional dollars will go a long way in helping to support our out-of-district special needs costs and also put us in a good position for fiscal '22. Since the start of fiscal year, the legislature has authorized more than $21.7 billion in spending through two interim budgets. The second interim budget is set to expire at the end of October. Another interim budget will need to be filed to give the legislative members time to review the new fiscal plan in time required for the legislator to propose and pass their budget. So on the backside, I'll provide you with some updates from DESI. So during the recent call with Commissioner of Education Jeff Riley, the commissioner expressed his gratitude to superintendents and school committees across the state for their collective efforts and work with our unions. Also, he expressed his appreciation for the effort being made by school systems for placing a strong emphasis on health and safety protocols. He acknowledged that there is still much uncertainty concerning COVID-19. Yet he continued to express his appreciation for how the school systems have calmly and efficiently carried out this work. The commissioner is optimistic. Conditions will continue to settle as more school systems across the Commonwealth continue to phase in in-person learning. The commissioner also informed superintendents that the Department of Elementary and Technical Education would be providing districts with additional red status guidance in the upcoming weeks. There are currently many districts across the Commonwealth in red, but acknowledge that the red status in many cases is not attributed. Again, the red status in many communities is not attributed to community spread. Instead, he noted, in many cases, the red level can be attributed to clusters of COVID-19 cases due to spikes in correctional facilities, college universities, or a nursing home. We also learned this week that DESI would be providing guidance regarding snow days and remote learning. So at a future meeting, and I think it'll be the first meeting in November, I'll have this as a standing item on our agenda. So snow day guidance will be shared in the upcoming weeks. The commissioner stated districts could schedule a snow day as a remote learning day. Again, he reiterated, this will be a local decision. The anticipated guidance will spell out options should communities incur a power failure or a, on the snow day or other storm day. If this were to occur, districts may request a waiver to have the day count as their school day. Lastly, the commissioner concluded the call by discussing the importance of completing the October 1st report, which Mrs. Monahan, Mrs. Blino, and her department, along with our principals, are working very diligently to account for every single student because there are chapter $70 tied to every student. And we are making strides as communities to expand Wi-Fi connectivity. And we are making strides as communities to expand Wi-Fi connectivity to all our students and families. I also wanted to give an update on fall sports. So Mr. Adovianelli today provided me with some information regarding fall sports. I believe it was at the last school committee meeting that a member asked what the participation rate was compared to last year. So just to remind the public, we have cross-country for boys and girls taking place in the fall. We have golf, boy soccer, girl soccer, and field hockey only. So last year at this time, in those five sports, we had a total of two hundred and forty-three participants. As of today, we have two hundred and eight participants. So we have forty-five participants in cross-country. Last year, we had fifty-nine. For golf, we have twenty participants this year. Last year, we had twenty-one, so a difference of one. For boy soccer is where we saw the greatest drop. For boy soccer, we have forty-nine participants this year. Last year, we had sixty-three. For girl soccer, we actually saw an increase this year. So for girl soccer, we had thirty-two last year, up to thirty-nine this year. And for field hockey, we also saw an increase. We have sixty-two participants in field hockey. Last year, we had sixty-one. So you see it varies spot by spot. So Mr. Adovianelli and I have been in contact frequently. He anticipates some new guidance coming from the MIAA regarding that wedge season that we discussed when we approved the fall athletic schedule. And Mr. Adovianelli also wanted to make me aware, again, that student participation is somewhat comparable or fairly comparable to last year. And they continue to encourage students to participate and attend sports. So they are working on trying to get more students to attend and participate. But they have played King Philip in a scrimmage and they play Mansfield next week and Franklin the following in Franklin this week. They did not play Attleboro due to Attleboro being in the red status. And those games will be rescheduled for later in the season. And Mr. Adovianelli is excited to report that all matches have been competitive at all levels. So the girl soccer team right now has a record of oh-two and one. The boy soccer team has a record of oh-two and one. Field hockey is one and two. Golf is oh and five. Boys cross-country, one and one, and girls cross-country, oh and two. There's been great participation in strength and conditioning. Those sessions are taking place outside along William Street. And again, the athletic, the Hockamock Athletic Directors will continue to meet to discuss what the winter season will look like and what the hybrid or unified season will look like, as well as what the wedge season will look like. So that's the update that I received from Mr. Adovianelli. And this week, I this last week, excuse me, I received a pleasant surprise, something that I wasn't anticipating regarding our work to grow our STEM program. So I need to give a shout out to Liz Palowski and to our three middle school STEM teachers for their work with Project Lead the Way. So congra we received this email that I share with you today. So congratulations to our schools for being recognized for achieving one hundred percent participation in Project Lead the Way, which was announced during the Project Lead the Way Virtual Conference. So Mrs. Palowski, thanks everyone for being a critical partner and for bringing high-quality applied STEM learning to all our students at the middle school level. And we could not be happier to celebrate their work and dedication to Project Lead the Way. And all the educators who are contributing to the success. And it was great to see Taunton being recognized for our efforts to grow this program. So this news will be shared at a conference being held with the Mass STEM Hub. And that'll be discussed, Taunton, we recognize for the work we're doing there to grow STEM. So again, I want to thank our three STEM teachers as well as Mrs. Palowski for helping to bring that vision of STEM to life in Taunton and helping to grow it in a very short period. So what even though COVID may be impacting many things in the school system, we're still plugging away with growing our STEM program. So with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Mr. Souza?
Madam Mayor, just a question on the fall sports. So we voted that the fall sports, which is we're currently in, which end, I think, in November. So the wedge season will be coming up right after the first of the year. And that would be a presentation sometime later on in the year that will be discussing what that presentation will be. So the wedge season would have to be approved before Wendy go ahead on that. Is that correct?
Correct. I'll have Mr. Adovianelli come back, provide us with an update in his work with the Hockamock Athletic Directors, as well as what the guidance he's they are receiving from the MIAA regarding the wedge season.
Thank you, because by the time it gets to by the time it comes another month or so, things may change and updates are fast and furious, I'm sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Souza. Mrs. Doherty?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Just a question that I follow up on a question I asked a few meetings ago regarding transportation. The discussion was around the need for families to provide transportation for the students who were participating in the program. So I'm interested in any kind of data that you've collected regarding children that might want to participate but cannot because they have no transportation. I think at the end of that conversation at the time, you indicated that you would indeed follow up with that to see if, in fact, any children are being left behind.
So I'll have some updated information at the next meeting, Mrs. Doherty, regarding any students who have not who have not but who are not participating in fall sports due to transportation.
So I just uh just to close that conversation, I think, given that the fall sports will be ending in four or five weeks and the winter sports will be coming up, that might be a good time to make some decisions about providing that transportation for winter sports. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. All right, everyone else is all set.
Did we accept his report? I'm sorry. Okay.
Motion to accept the superintendent's report as read.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. On a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Fagan.
Yep. Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore? Is he gone? Oh, Mr. Fiore?
Mute.
You're on mute, Mr. Fiore?
Oh, sorry.
Nope, you're on mute again. We're on a roll call vote to accept the superintendent's report.
Yes.
Mrs. Spagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeda?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to S hybrid and remote learning update, and I assume that's you, Mr. Cabral?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Mr. Jakes, would you mind sharing the screen? So as Mr. Jakes prepares the screen, I'm just going to provide everyone with an update on where we are and where we're heading. And I'll also talk about some of the work we've done with our facilities and some of the work that we've done to know to create a real robust, remote blended learning hybrid plan. I know that's a mouthful. So, Mr. Jakes, would you mind going to slide two? Otherwise, I have control. Thank you, Steve. So this should look somewhat familiar as we this to share this information with the public a couple of weeks ago. And I think it's a good reminder to as we approach next week to remind the public. And again, we'll share this on our website and work on making sure that it pops or that it appears quickly. So parents don't have to drill down and find it. I know some people are still looking for this information, are still not certain. So again, we want to make sure that families know. So after this presentation, we'll also work on a PSA to help finalize our plans and make families aware of what they can expect next week, which is a big day in Taunton Public Schools as our teachers and administrators are very eager to receive students next week, or bulk of our students next week. So any family who is identified as Cohort A. So if you're on Cohort A, you will be attending school in person on Mondays and Tuesday. So Cohort A will attend in person on Monday and Tuesday. Wednesday will be a remote check-in day. And then on Thursday and Friday, students will be attending school synchronously, checking in with their classes the way they normally would during the remote portion of our learning plan. So our students will receive four days of instruction from their teachers. What differentiates our plan from some of the surrounding communities or some of the other urban communities is that our students will have four days of engagement, two in person and two remotely. In other communities, that what we where we've learned is taking place and what we've learned is taking place is that on the days that students are home remote, it's similar to what we experienced in the spring, which was during the spring, families or students were asked to work independently on packets with very little direction or guidance from this from their teachers. So where I believe our plan differentiates is the four days of contact, two in person and two remote with the Wednesday check-in. So if you really wanted to count the Wednesday as a check-in day, you're getting five days of contact with your teachers. Again, synchronous teaching. So I'm very proud and excited to be rolling out this hybrid plan in a manner where our students will have that consistent daily contact with their teachers. So again, that was a lesson or a hard lesson we learned during the spring with our remote plan. If you are in Cohort B, you will be remote on Monday and Tuesday. I'm sorry, with the check-in day on Wednesday, and you will be in person on Thursday and Friday. If you are in Cohort C, you will be in person Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, with your check-in day being Wednesday. And Cohort D, Cohort D will be remote all five days. And the Cohort D students will remain assigned with their current teacher. So again, I think it's important to for parents and students to realize that as of now, if you are in Cohort D, the teacher you are assigned to is the teacher you will continue to log in with when you are on remote on Monday. And then obviously, all teachers and staff will continue to report to work. So again, thought it'd be helpful to explain to parents how Cohort A, B, C, and D will work and also to make families understand that the teacher they are currently assigned to is the teacher that they will be assigned to for the foreseeable future. There may be some changes down the road. One of the things that we're noticing is as the virus spikes or as the virus decreases in Taunton and in the surrounding community, we're starting to see requests. So to accommodate hybrid requests to go in person, very, very challenging now because all our classrooms have been measured in created or designed to account for the students coming back hybrid who have indicated they are coming back hybrid. So if we start to see more and more parents choosing hybrid, that's going to put stress on our classroom configurations because we cannot physically accommodate all the students who are asking to go hybrid. So we want parents to be aware that we'll try to accommodate changes as best as possible. What we hope we'll see will be a one-for-one switch where if someone chooses to go remote, we be we may be able to accommodate that switch by bringing someone who wants to go hybrid. So being able to keep the classes at a at a good capacity. So again, this work will be ongoing. It's something that we'll be analyzing. Now, we really want to see our class list next week and see how many students, if our numbers and our projections are accurate in that the students who are attending in person, that the numbers are accurate and that the space can be accommodating to those coming back hybrid. And if we can accommodate more students, we'll try to recruit more students for in-person learning. But right now, our classrooms have been designed to meet the six foot minimum social distancing and to accommodate the students who are identified as hybrid. Any changes will take time and we ask parents to, you know, continue to be patient. And what DESI has asked is that school systems ask that parents provide four to six weeks' notice before any changes are made. But again, if we can make changes sooner, we'll do our best to make changes sooner. We just need the public to realize that we may not be able to accommodate those changes in a manner that's as timely efficient as they would like. Next slide, please, Steve. So again, I thought it'd be helpful to kind of remind people where we are and where we've been and where we're going. So we've had four milestones already. So we had the first day of school on September fourteenth. We had in-person learning taking place for our high-needs learners in first grade through age twenty-two. And we also brought back our English language learners on September fourteenth. On September twenty-first was the first day for pre-K and kindergarten. On September twenty-first, in-person learning for high-needs pre-K and K. And then the big day on October twenty-sixth, we will welcome back a bulk of our students. So in-person learning for kindergarten, first grade, second grade, fifth grade, eighth grade, ninth grade. And then Taunton High Alternative High School will come back. And again, the reason for bringing the eighth graders and ninth graders back on their own day, eighth graders, this will be their first time, their first experience entering Taunton High School. So we want to make sure that they have plenty of time to get comfortable and acclimated to the new surroundings, knowing that we weren't able to hold those in-person orientations. So that'll really give the eighth graders an opportunity to get to be able to navigate that building with less cramped crowded hallways and really feel comfortable learning that space, especially with all the new protocols entering the building, exiting the building, loading our buses, offloading our buses. Again, there are going to be a lot of moving pieces and we feel this will provide us with an opportunity to be more successful and also to reevaluate the systems and plans in place as we continue to bring more learners in at about five hundred students a week at the high school as we bring more kids back. Because that's about the average size of a class at the high school. And again, we're excited to bring back our kids in first graders, our second graders, and our third graders. And then on November ninth, we will bring back our third grade and fourth grade. So that rounds off elementary schools. We will close out the middle schools with our sixth and seventh graders. And then we'll continue to phase in our high school students on the sixteenth, the thirtieth, and the seventh. Next slide, please, Steve. Back up one, please, Steve. Thank you, Steve. So again, this should look familiar. And this is just some data that I'm going to try to keep that I'd like to provide you on a bi-weekly basis when we meet as a school committee. So I just recreated a dashboard and I want to give credit to the Plymouth Public Schools who shared this with us. So just to give you some background on where we are with regards to COVID. So we have a total of seven thousand nine hundred ninety-six students registered in Taunton Public Schools. The number of students newly reported this week, and again, this is as of ten sixteen. So the number of students currently quarantined newly reported this week with a positive COVID-19 status is one in the Taunton Public Schools. The number of students currently quarantined due to exposure at a school is five. The number of students currently quarantined due to non-school exposure is three. We have just over twelve hundred employees in Taunton Public Schools, one thousand two hundred twenty-eight. The number of employees newly reported this week with a positive COVID status is zero. We have not had any. So that means our teachers are following the guidance and the directions that we've had in place at in at work and when they're not at work. The number of employees currently quarantined due to exposure at school is two. And the number of employees currently quarantined due to non-school exposure is eleven. So those that's the data that we have regarding COVID-19 in Taunton Public Schools. And then obviously, we want to continue to phase in students. We wanted to continue to provide daily teacher and student interactions. We want to maintain appropriate social distance. We want to establish a process for health checks. We want to we're going to continue to enforce strictly enforce face coverings for staff and students. We are going to regularly clean and disinfect our schools and our buses. And we're going to continue to promote and teach our students the importance of hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette, just as coughing into your elbow. Next slide, please, Steve. This is a flow chart. I won't bore you with all the details of the flow chart and we will share this so that families are aware and familiar. But this is the flow chart that we've created to help principals and our families understand that if we do have a case or if somebody is feeling sick, these are the protocols and this is the process that we will follow once we have identified someone who is ill or someone who is positive for COVID-19. So again, this will be shared in the school in the on our website and will be shared with all our families as well. So we do and also in your packet, I provided you with all the communications that we will utilize depending on the different situations that arise that are COVID-related in our schools. Next slide, please, Steve. So a lot of work is taking place regarding our facilities. And I just want to reiterate, too, that a lot of this work is being funded by the CARES fund funding that we received and also through the other grants. The name escapes me, which we received two hundred and twenty-five dollars per student. So we've received about roughly three point six million dollars to build a robust hybrid learning plan and to also prepare our buildings for in-person learning. So every classroom will receive a bucket of wipes, which the PPE is in the building. And I believe Mrs. Moynihan has audited roughly six months worth of PPE for the school system. Our buildings are very busy putting up signage regarding traffic flow, staircases. So signage is something that's ongoing and will be adjusted as we continue to bring more students into our buildings. On the far right, you see a picture of the air purifier, the HEPA air purifiers that we have brought into our schools to ensure that our classrooms are getting a minimum of four air exchanges per hour. So that is the guidance that we received from Dr. Joseph Allen, our air quality consultant, who's affiliated with Harvard. Now, the minimum standard that our buildings were designed for was about two to three air exchanges per hour. We have set a higher benchmark and we are going to ensure that our buildings receive four air exchanges per hour. And I need to commend Mrs. Moynihan and her vendors for working very diligently to secure these air purifiers. As I have learned from my superintendent colleagues, that the purchase of air purifiers is on back order, similar to what some districts experienced with Chromebooks being on back order. So we'll have all the air purifiers we'll need and then some to ensure. with Chromebooks being on back order. So we'll have all the air purifiers we'll need and then some to ensure that we are meeting that high standard. Well, Mr. Jakes is also making me aware that there's a PSA that will be going out soon regarding hybrid learning for eighth and ninth graders. So I wanted the, the public to be aware of that. So thank you, Steve. Oh Steve, could you back up one, please? I wasn't done. So obviously, we are purchasing masks for students and staff, so we will have masks in the building if students forget their mask. We also have masks in our building should a staff member forget the mask. Mrs. Moynihan has secured enough hand sanitizer. We have hand sanitizing stations throughout our schools. And on the bottom right, you see a picture of an HVAC unit ventilator, which is common in our buildings. So working with our building department, Mrs. Moynihan is ensuring that the air ventilated, HVAC units in our schools are working the way they're supposed to work or the way they are meant to work in addition to having air purifiers in the classrooms to get to that minimum of four air exchanges per hour, which again, is a very high standard that we are upholding in the Taunton Public Schools. To provide our students and staff with a safe learning and working environment. Next slide, please Steve. So I just want to kind of bring you back. You know, I don't, I don't believe any of you would have attended classrooms like this. I think all of you probably would have attended classrooms similar to what we see in the upper left and the bottom right. So just kind of how schools have evolved over the years. So you see whiteboards or blackboards, the use of chalk, students sitting in rows, working at desks. And that's what we call more the factory model of education or more the traditional model of education. Let's fast forward to today. Our whiteboards, I'm sorry, our blackboards or our chalkboards have been replaced with magnetic whiteboards. Our desks have been replaced with flexible seating, that you can have students sitting in groups or have students sitting alone. And you see a lot of display space, even the flooring is different. In some cases, instead of having a wooden floor, you're seeing rubberized floors or soft floors. So again, the classroom and the learning experience has really done a three sixty over the last fifty, sixty, seventy years or so. So again, the evolution of the classroom. Next slide, please Steve. So let's take a look at the evolution of the classroom when you add COVID nineteen. So how do we build a robust learning management system platform? Well, you do that with the use of technology, which will allow us to educate students in person and remote synchronously or simultaneously. So some of the technology that we've purchased will be something called a Permittium board or a touchscreen monitor. And that is what you see in the upper left-hand corner. So the touchscreen monitor will serve as a large iPad that will allow teachers to use a larger screen so the students in person can have a larger visual and it'll also support the students learning remotely off their, from their Chromebooks. In the bottom left, we are also purchasing monitors. And these monitors will be used. One of the things that I noticed when I visited classrooms was teachers struggling to see their class on a fourteen inch screen. Very difficult to teach remotely and also view your students remotely on a fourteen inch Chromebook monitor. So the large monitor on wheels will be used to see those students who are attending remotely while also viewing the students who are attending in person. So the teacher will have the ability on a larger screen to see their students remotely as well as in person. We've also purchased Poly cameras. A Poly camera is a three-in-one conference camera. The Poly camera is a tracking camera that will track the teacher while they're teaching, doing what they do best from the front of the room, teaching from their whiteboard, teaching from a teaching station, or teaching from a station in the classroom. The Poly camera also has a built-in microphone so that students can hear clearly. And it also has a built-in speaker so that the students who are speaking remotely or from home, the students in class can hear them nice and loud or nice and clearly when the teacher calls on them. I can personally report a positive feedback from one of my students, or one of my own children, for their teacher who's using the Poly camera. And when I spoke with my student, my child, she said it was the clearest she's ever heard her teacher and it was the best visual in which she's seen her teacher teach. And when talking to the teacher, he reported it as a game changer for the way he's teaching remotely. So we're very excited to have these in the hands of our teachers. So between the monitors to see your students, the Permittium boards to engage our students, and the Poly cameras, we are providing our teachers with some great tools to enhance our hybrid plan. All our teachers and students received Chromebooks. We're also looking at some teaching platforms for teachers who want to work in different stations in their classrooms. And probably the most important feature would be going from one gig to ten gigs, which took place on Friday. So we were at our max with one gig. Now we're officially at ten gig. We should not have, or we should, we should not experience any internet disruption as long as it's not weather-related or storm damage and whatnot. So we're very excited about the work and I need to compliment Mrs. Moynihan again for helping Mrs. Bleno, our IT director, and her team, secure these resources and also deploy these resources into our schools. And I really need to commend our teachers for their patience as we continue to build and add to our platform. Next slide, please Steve. So all these tools are useless without professional development. So I need to commend Mr. Barata and our three curriculum coordinators at the elementary level, as well as our high school curriculum coordinators for the professional development that we are offering our teachers through an agency called Modern Teacher, who is one of the leaders when it comes to hybrid learning professional development. So Mr. Barata did, Barata did some research, spoke with his contacts at DESI, and we learned that Modern Teacher was at the forefront of this work. And we were able to secure Modern Teacher and we plan on utilizing Modern Teacher on our Wednesdays, which are professional days for our teachers. During our three upcoming professional days in November, we'll be heavily focused on Modern Teacher. Where they will, they will provide different examples on how teachers can teach remotely during the hybrid and then have the teachers go back and practice how to do this. So I wanted Mr. Jakes to show you a quick snippet of one of our videos, which will kind of give you a taste of how a touchscreen monitor could be utilized or will be utilized, as well as how students can learn effectively in person and remotely. So Steve, I'll turn things over to you, if you don't mind.
Raise your hand and tell me what was that whole quiz about? Hundred tens and ones. What's another way we can say hundred tens and ones? Samaria. Place value. So we still talking about place value. I talked about place value yesterday, right? So we still talking about place value. Alright, so now I need you to go to your agenda. We're clicking on Near Pod Lesson. Thumbs up if we are ready. Thumbs up here. Thumbs up if you're ready. Ezekiel, thank you for keeping that camera on, buddy. Alright, can I have a volunteer to read our objective to us?
Recognize a digit represents ten times the value of what it represents in the place to its right.
So for our fluency practice, I need everybody to stand up right behind the desk. I need y'all to stand up right behind your chair or wherever you are at home. So we'll count by threes going up. If we count up, we gotta punch up. So y'all ready to punch up? Y'all ready to punch up? Hold your hands up. Let's see. Count by three, go.
Three, six, nine, ten, fifteen, eighteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, thirty, thirteen, thirty-six.
Alright, we're at thirty-six right now. Now we gotta go backwards. So we gotta punch it down, we gotta pull it down. So these arms is up, one arm up. Michael, one arm up. Alright, let's go, thirty-six. Twenty-seven. I like the way some of y'all looking at me instead of cheat sheet. Good job, good job. Alright, give yourself a round of applause and have a seat. Alright, now we're gonna label some place value charts. So I want you to label your place value chart and use your place value disc to complete that activity. Let me put it over here. So you need to use your pen tool to label yours on your board and then submit it when you are done. Alright, we're doing three tens and two ones. Who can raise their hand and tell me what's three tens and two ones? What is the standard form of that number? Is that it? He said thirty-two. How, how we feeling about thirty-two? Good job. Four hundred three ones. Who can tell me the standard form of that number? Four hundred and three ones. Tell you. She said four hundred three. How we feeling about four hundred three? Everybody agree? Yep, four hundred three. How do you, how does four hundred three look with digits? How would that number look? Like three zero four? How would it look? Four zero three, because we don't have any what? We don't have any tens. So four zero three. Good job. Alright, so it's your turn for the application problem. Alright, Amy is baking muffins. Each baking tray can hold six muffins. If Amy bakes four trays of muffins, how many muffins will she have in all? And then part B says, the corner bakery produced ten times as many muffins as Amy baked. How many muffins did the bakery make? Y'all ready? Alright, six minutes. Let's see it. I'm watching Go Guardian. Alright, I see some good pictures. Good job. Some good pictures. Watch your time. Alright, time's up. Parents, go ahead and unmute your mic and explain to us. How did you get this answer?
So I can share the full link with the board if you want to see the entire video. So just some things to point out. The Permittium boards, that is something that we are purchasing, purchasing for the elementary schools. Because of the need and because of the level of engagement at the elementary school, where elementary teachers are teaching five classes or prepping for five classes a day, we believe the Permittium boards or the touch monitors would be more beneficial at the elementary level. That was a fourth grade classroom, just, just so you know. Neopod is something that we are using, that that teacher was using. You may notice that all the students had their Chromebooks with them, whether they were in person or remote. So that is something that will continue with our students. The teacher was teaching from the front of the room in her bubble, maintaining the six feet social distance. The students, she could see the students remotely on her touch monitor. So again, you could see, you could hear the teacher engaging the kids at home, you know, thanking the student for having his monitor on, you know, telling the students at home to raise their hands while the kids in person did the same thing. So the professional development and the technology that we are putting in the hands or providing to our teachers is all going to be geared and centered towards replicating what you just witnessed on different scales at the elementary, middle, and high school level. So again, we know we're asking a lot of our teachers, just like we asked a lot of our teachers on September fourteenth when we started remote. And we've seen growth over a six-week period of time. And we knew that that was going to happen and we knew that was going to be needed to build a remote, a robust plan. So I feel very comfortable where we are and this is just the next step as we continue along this path of hybrid learning. So I want to commend again, Mrs. Moynihan, Mrs. Bleno, and Mr. Barata, our curriculum experts. You know, for really, you know, working very hard to put this together and learning best practices from other districts and applying them here in Taunton to make sure that our kids, you know, are going to get the, are going to be healthy, they're going to be safe, and we're shooting high for that engagement. So with that, that concludes my superintendent's report and presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Mr. Souza?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Superintendent Cabral. So just, just to review a few things. The, the, so the dates are exactly the same as in this document that we, it's tough to do. This document that came out two weeks ago, the dates are exactly the same for, in the, the the amount of the classrooms, the grades are all going back on the, on the date specified. So how are we going to notify the parents between now, Thursday, Friday? We got the PSAs. Remind us if you're in cohort A or cohort B, because like in elementary right now, they're going four days on the, on the learning. So someone going to remind them, or are they going to get something from the school to say, hey, you're in cohort A or you're in cohort B? Just the elementary, then we can go to the other ones. I just, what the, what's the process going to be? Especially for the kindergartners, the poor kindergartners have never been in the buildings, that maybe he's a new kindergarten, the parents don't even have, have been at school. So just curious on how that's going to work.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll continue to message. So again, Mr. Jakes and Mr. Mattos are taking care of the high school. I'll work with our middle school principals and our elementary school principals to message what to expect at those levels. And again, I'll reiterate what was, you know, a lot of thought went into our plan, especially concerning our new learners. Having new learners in the building when it's fully occupied or with, you know, upperclassmen, I think would have been difficult during this pandemic. So I think bringing, I believe bringing back our new learners, where they have access to the entire building, you know, and have teachers readily available to help guide them or show them around will be helpful. So we're gonna utilize our PSAs, social media, and School Brains communication system to make sure parents understand, you know, what's going to be happening on Monday. We, we realize that, you know, timing isn't always the best, the timing isn't perfect. But we really want to make sure that the message we put out is final when it goes out, so that we're not constantly bombarding parents with changes in our plan or changes in what to expect. We know there's nothing more frustrating than being told one thing and then the next day being told something different.
Yeah, that's exactly right. And the bus, I know as a parent in the past, the bus routes have always been, so if they took the same bus, if you took a bus last year, if you got a third grade going in the fourth and the same, it's the same bus you had last year, it's the same bus you're gonna have this year. You just won't have as many on it. And the bus routes are posted on the website, too?
Buses, bus routes should be posted on the website. If they're not, we'll, we will make sure that they are. But I believe bus routes are posted on the family page is where you would find the bus routes along with other information. But again, if we need to make it pop on our website so it's easily to find and parents don't have to drill down, we'll do that.
Thank you. A lot of work went into this. Thank you, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. Mrs. Doherty? And then Mr. Palowski.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions just to follow on to what Mr. Souza has asked. The communication to parents is really critical. This is Wednesday night. Has there been communication to families already who are going, for the students who are coming back on the twenty-sixth, which is really the critical first step?
Well, I, I'd have to get back to you regarding every school, but I do know at the high school, that communication was sent out. Or we received, their letter went out, we got into high school. And in my communication and meetings with the principals, this is something that I have been informing them that needs to be done regarding creating orientation videos, orientation PSAs, and also communicating to families what to expect on the opening day. So that's all stuff that we will finalize in the days to come.
Well, there aren't many days between now and Monday, Superintendent, as you well know.
The sense of urgency regarding communication, Mrs. Doherty.
Uh, so there are a variety of ways that you can communicate and I'm sure that you're using all of them. There are robo-calls at your PSAs, that lovely call that you made when we first went to remote, when you told youngsters to comb their hair and brush their teeth and do that kind of thing. I think that those messages, this texting, this email, assuming you collected all of this information from families, clearly there are families that don't go to Facebook, that don't have access to Twitter, that prefer not to communicate in that way. So I'm particularly concerned about, about those families. And little kids, as you pointed out, the K kids who are coming into school for the first time are anxious about about being there. You had indicated way back in the summertime that you would be doing some kind of orientation program for for families. I don't know if that happened or not, but I'm assuming that it did. But, so that aspect is really critical. My second question is the, so there are three aspects. So the, the cameras, the, and the air purifiers, do you, can you provide us with, or did you provide within the finance report, the cost for those two very critical pieces of equipment for teaching and in classrooms? So
I don't have
Where does somebody come from?
I don't have the exact figures off the top of my head, but what I can say is that all those purchases were done with CARES money or done with the other COVID nineteen-related grant. Because obviously, that's what the grants are allowed for and that's why we received that funding to build, to build an educational platform for blended and remote learning and also to make sure our buildings are ready to receive students in a safe manner.
Thank you. So we had, at the last meeting, asked for a report of COVID expenditures. So I'm assuming that those two purchases will find their way to the list of COVID expenditures as well. So for the moment, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Doherty. Okay, we're all set. Alright, moving on to administrative's business staff and report. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Palowski, my apologies.
That's okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Mr. Cabral. Mr. Cabral, if you could speak a little bit about what you are, what you and the special ed department are doing to help accommodate additional special need students into cohort C, especially those that are really struggling with the remote learning and that have been reaching out specifically asking to be, you know, in asking to be admitted into Cohort C.
So Mrs. Mulrooney continues to meet with parents or work with parents regarding wanting their students or seeing if their students qualify for Cohort C. So that work is ongoing and that's something that will continue to be ongoing even when we're in hybrid.
Okay.
I do know that I spoke with Mrs. Heather Bailey's Regoris regarding the CPAC having a meeting in the near future. So one of the things that we're going to be doing, the CPAC will be doing, we'll be working with the Special Education Department to have a forum or to have a, hold a meeting, I shouldn't say, not a forum, to have a CPAC meeting to answer questions. And I believe usually it's done at one of their first meetings of the year, where they usually go over a parent's basic rights presentation, which I believe Attorney Mitchell usually conducts. So again, that work will continue to be ongoing regarding the platform to whether or not students qualify for the four days versus the two days on hybrid learning.
Okay, all right, excellent. And I think what the parents really want is they want the feedback and they want the communication. I think everybody understands that we can't accommodate everybody in Cohort C. But I think if their concerns are addressed, they would very much appreciate that. So thank you.
Mrs. Mulrooney and I are pretty consistent contact. So she does keep me updated when changes are made or when team meetings are held and it's determined that the team has determined, again, the team has determined that the child is not being successful remotely and the child would qualify or qualifies for four days of learning in Cohort C. So again, it's a team decision. I wish we could say it's no parent recommendation or teacher recommendation. But unfortunately, that's not the way the special education law works.
Okay, thank you. And my second question, if I could, to piggyback off what my colleagues had said, the importance of communication. So there's a ton of work that the system has been doing and there's a ton of information. And sometimes it gets overwhelming. Things are in emails, in PSAs, in Facebook posts and whatnot. I think we really need to utilize the website to the best of our abilities specifically for things like the calendar that you just put out. So I don't know if it's there yet, but hopefully if you can, on that one, that page where you click and it says the reopening plan, I think that is an easy way for somebody to go when they want to know what day is my kid starting, the specific information, rather than having to dig through many emails that they may have gotten from a principal, a teacher, or from you. So I think utilizing the website to the best of our ability to put all that key information and update it. I really appreciate the COVID tracker that you put out there. I think that's an important thing. I think as we start opening the schools and parents are sending their kids to our schools, they're going to want to know what the situation is. They're going to want to see the work that we're doing to keep the kids safe. So I think that would be great if we continue that work.
Thank you, Mr. Palowski. And just to follow up on one of the things Mr. Palowski talked about, I would certainly be interested to learn from Mrs. Mulrooney how many kids that were not initially eligible for Cohort C have since been accepted into Cohort C and are now in the in-person learning. Mr. Cabral, if Mrs. Mulrooney would be able to?
I know, I took notes. That's information we can have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to Mr. Cabral. So I know we mentioned the CPAC. In my first term, I recall CPAC coming before us and in attendance was Ms. Mulrooney and a couple of other of the folks in that department. Would it be wise to just, at our next meeting, invite all parties into a school committee meeting? So we can, I mean, there's so many questions that I have answered. Like my colleagues, I've gotten calls and emails regarding, more specifically about special ed. And I immediately state, that's not my forte. Forte is my finance. Curriculum special ed is something I lack in and I admit it, but I'm learning and I'm a quick learner. There's all kinds of different questions that come up, expectations in the remote learning and kids that are being disenfranchised because of situations at home. And again, I recall in my first term that they came before us. And would it be wise that we could invite all groups to come in together? The CPAC folks, the special ed department, including Ms. Mulrooney and anybody that she designates to be part of this? Is that possible?
I think anything is possible. I'm trying to recall what the topic was that night. Because what we're picturing and what Heather and I discussed along with Mrs. Mulrooney is a regular meeting where they attend on Zoom, school committee members can attend because it's a CPAC meeting. And that way, it's not a televised meeting. Anyone can attend. They can ask their questions in a comfortable environment. And I think that might be, they can have an agenda and Mrs. Mitchell can do her presentation. So I think that would probably be the best way and it can be more conducive to families. So I think, and Heather seemed to agree that, and we've been trying to get this off the ground, they're going to utilize our Zoom account so that they can have this meeting. And I'll make sure the school committee is invited if you guys wish to attend.
Now, if I may, Mayor, I understand it's about thirteen hundred families that are impacted with special ed. Am I correct? That have special ed, special ed needs.
I don't want to give false information.
All right, well, let's say it's a thousand. So at this meeting that's going to be held, can we communicate to every family that's impacted that there is going to be an avenue of communication for them to hear and listen and weigh in on all these questions that I get and I'm sure other colleagues get so that we could put this to rest and kind of create a pathway for one centralized location and communicate that there is going to be this meeting. It's not an official school committee meeting, but it's an official CPAC meeting. Let's put it that way. Is that possible?
Yeah, and again, I will say this. One of the reasons why CPAC was created is because special education is, it was very complicated. And I don't believe one meeting will resolve the matter and that's why CPAC meets monthly. So that's why I would encourage the CPAC, now that they have access to a Zoom account, to schedule their meetings, send out the communications the way they normally do to all their special education parents, because I believe they communicate with all the special education parents on their list serve and let them know that they can attend this meeting sometime in November to have questions addressed by the special education department. And I believe if time allows, to hear the presentation on parents' basic rights.
Okay, so there is a way that we could help facilitate this as a district?
I spoke with Heather today about how to help facilitate this.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. So we have Mrs. Doherty, Mr. Souza, Mr. Fiore, and then Mrs. Almeida. Mrs. Doherty?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for the second bite of the apple, I guess, as you might know. So I have two questions. One has to do with remote teachers. So we know that there are a number of teachers who have chosen to teach remotely for a variety of reasons, medical reasons or otherwise. So we have this now wonderful technology, these synchronous cameras that allow, as the demonstration showed us, that allows the teacher to reach everyone, both those kids who are in the classroom and those children who are at home learning remotely. So what does the remote, the teacher who has opted to teach remotely, how does that work? It's very complicated, I'm sure. But what is that teacher doing? Are they partnering, do you think?
So teachers who were approved to work remote, we have provided teachers who are approved to work remote with Polycams, our cameras. So they will be receiving Poly Camera. Actually, I know one of them who has already received their Poly Camera. So we are trying to make sure that whatever they would have had in the classroom, we can provide them with while they're working remotely.
So what about the children that they're working with? Not specifically by name, but what groups of children?
They're going to continue working with the same students that have been assigned to them.
And those are the children who are for remote completely as well?
And in some cases, we will have teachers, taking for example, one of our specialists. So one of our specialists who say it's an art teacher, gym teacher, music teacher. So one of our specialists, if they are approved to work remotely because of several factors that I don't need to get into, that they will be teaching the students in their classroom as well, as well as students at home. So with this technology and the way we will be covering classes, the students who are in the school will be learning from their teacher who was teaching remotely using the technology that we have put in their hands. What might get tricky with the technology is the touchscreens or the touch monitors. That might be tricky to configure at home. But the Poly cameras, the Chromebooks, the monitors, that's all tools that will work in someone's home who is working remotely. But again, I want to let the public know that is all taught in public school property. It does not belong to the individual person.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. My second question, I'd like to just swing back for a moment to the issue of orientation. So we have groups of kindergartners coming to their school for the first time. We have groups of fifth graders, I believe, coming to their middle school for the first time and groups of eighth graders going into the high school for the first time. So I'm just wondering if that first day back, the twenty-sixth, and then of course, the first day back for the other half of the cohort could be devoted to some degree to an orientation where students are introduced to the building, shown where different aspects of the building are so that they are more comfortable in an environment that they've never been in. I have no idea whether that's possible or not, but all I can imagine is this very nervous kindergartner or fifth grader or eighth grader going into a brand new circumstance without having been in that environment before. So is there any thinking going on in that regard? Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Cabral?
Is he frozen?
Mr. Cabral looks frozen, so if I could jump in there. Mrs. Doherty, every year students enter the building, they go through that re-acclimation process where the nurse's offices, where's the main office, where's the restroom, fire drills and such. We believe that those first few days is going to be re-acclimation to the building. And as an aside, our kindergartners have actually already had experience going to the rooms because the majority of them, if not all of them, have been screened by their kindergarten teacher. So they've had some familiarity, a little bit anyways, with obviously a face-to-face interaction with their teacher and a little bit about their room.
So again, yeah, those first few days will be used for really orienting those children to their building. Thank you very much. That's a comforting thought. Thank you.
Sorry, I froze.
Oh, that's okay. Mr. Barata took over for you and he did a fine job.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Mr. Souza, briefly?
Very briefly. Thank you for another bite of the apple, as my colleague said. You know, this notification to parents, I think, is a very simple process. We're already in school. Each teacher has X amount of students in the classroom already remotely. And we're using a communication tool to communicate between the teacher and the parents. We just use that communication tool to tell them, you know, A through whoever it is, Mary, Suzie, and wherever it may be, you're in Cohort A and then the rest are in, the other ones are in Cohort B, right through the communication tool. We can do it district-wide and school-wide, but I think the best thing to do is do it classroom work, the classroom. That's just a quick thought. It dawned on me a little while ago. That's the simplest and smoothest way to do it. Everybody's in school already. They're just in school remotely. The teacher can inform everybody what cohort they're in. Just a thought. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. Mr. Fiore?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm kind of curious about how teachers are being trained to deal with all this media. The video that we saw, the teacher was very lively and you really have to have that kind of approach with the younger children. But I know when you talk about video and online kind of communication, they talk about video with adults and older children as being a cool medium rather than a heated one. And I was wondering if the teachers in the higher grades are being coached to do a different approach from the kids in the younger grades.
Mr. Barata, would you like to give a little insight into the professional development through Modern Teacher and how that will be tailor-made and customized to the different grade levels?
Sure, if I could back up a little bit, the whole onboarding process of Modern Teacher, not only was what Superintendent Cabral mentioned about reaching out to people at DESI, they're also involved with eleven districts on the Cape. Modern Teacher is Norton, another Beverly, I think, their national network of supporting teachers in the blended learning environment. So I'd like to thank my thought partners in the process who developed sort of a template. Because the biggest question teachers had is how am I going to be able to teach students in front of me at home at the same time? And that was the essential question. And that was the kickoff point of our professional development series with Modern Teacher. And again, my thought partners were Becky Coet, Delilah Mendoza, Elizabeth Palowski, Dr. Tina Rogers, Associate Headmaster Kristen Keenan, IT Director Carolyn Blino, where we worked on this suggested hybrid template of when will we have synchronous learning, a launch of a lesson? When will we then break out the instruction to those in front of us, which is going to really be our priority, because we want to capitalize on the time they're in front of us and when they're away from us asynchronous? And how to pull it back together with some type of digital exit ticket or summary activity, either virtually or in person or a combination of both. And as we move forward, Mr. Fiore, our professional development today and next Wednesday is more of a global perspective of touching base a little bit, as Mrs. Doherty mentioned, and others, about how do you acclimate students to the building? We learned a lot during our remote instruction. A lot of best practices were implemented and learned. It's how do we coalesce all those lessons into now this hybrid environment? And we talked a little bit today about, you know, what did we learn about today? We learned about standard operating procedures. You know, how do we standardize those practices that we knew were beneficial and helpful? How we practice it, and we did have an opportunity to practice it today. And we're going to try to implement those as we go forward. Next Wednesday is again going to be global approach. And then we go November second, third, and fourth, we're going to have breakout groups by grade span, elementary, middle school, high school, and then also service providers and how to use this new domain of learning. You're right, I sat in a history class Tuesday, I think it was, and watching how they interdispersed videos along with the lecture. It happened to be about flappers in the nineteen twenties and how that movement came about with women taking a larger role or fighting for a larger role in society. And it was much different than what you saw. There was a sort of group interactive. And I think they probably, if we watched the video a little longer, they probably broke off to another section within the lesson, whereas the high school went back and forth interfacing while polls were taking place in the background and such. So you are right, it's going to look different at each level. And our idea of providing that differentiated support for our staff is our goal. Tomorrow, we're going to meet with all the curriculum supervisors, pre-K to seven, eight through twelve, our building principals, central office, to get feedback on our PD yesterday and map it out. So I'm sorry for the long description, but I want you to know that we are trying to address the needs of the students because that's the whole priority. This is really, what is the student experience? Because that's how we lost out last spring, was because we rolled out very quickly. We're worried about, and rightfully so, health and welfare about the students and the social, emotional aspect. And we somewhat put the instruction on the back burner a little bit, where now we realize we have to come out of the gate because we don't know what's going to happen. So we're going to prepare ourselves for more solid instruction and that's our goal. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to kind of echo or just reinforce something that Mr. Barata mentioned. I know everyone is very eager to get kids back into the school system, but I want to say that our plan really provides, has given a lot of thought to what the educational day will look like. So we really want to make sure that our kids are learning, that our teachers are prepared and that the kids at home, the kids in front of them, are getting meaningful instruction. We just don't want it to be what it feels like we're putting kids back in school just to get them back in school. We really want to make sure that when they're there, that they're engaged and that they're learning, because we have a lot of learning to catch up on. So I'm proud of the work that we're doing here in Taunton. And I think our plan, in the end, I think we're going to look back and say that our plan was the right plan.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Okay, Mrs. Almeida?
I'm all set.
Okay, no problem. Okay, so I think we were moving to administrative business staffing report. Anything to do with that? Mr. Souza?
We need a motion to. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Mrs. Fagan.
Yes. Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Sousa?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Moving on to H subcommittee reports, Finance and Law Subcommittee, uh, ten twenty-one twenty, Mr. Martin.
Finance Law Subcommittee made earlier this evening with myself, Mr. Fiori, Mr. Sousa. Also in attendance were Superintendent Cabral and Assistant Superintendent Monahan. We had three items on the agenda this evening. First one was bills payable in the amount of nine hundred eighty-two thousand, one hundred four dollars and seventy-four cents. Which was approved. Second item was a donation from Plymouth, Rhode Island. Yeah, Rhode Island. In the amount of two thousand dollars and those monies are going to be used for PPE for students. And a letter of appreciation has been sent to the, uh, to the organization. Third item was a facilities update from Ms. Monahan. Uh, now Mulcahy School is ninety-seven percent complete. It's actually being used. It's things like punch lists and, uh, some of the grounds of landscaping and so forth that need to be finished. And there's a playground that will be installed next, uh, spring, so, uh, it won't be a hundred percent until it's, till it's done, which won't be till next spring. We've talked about hybrids starting on Monday. That was discussed in Finance and Law. We talked about the air purifiers. That was discussed in Finance and Law. Uh, it's nice to know that the high school roof is complete and a drone will be flying over tomorrow to check it out. Uh, rather than people going up there on, uh, walking around on it. And lastly, the Galligan School SRI that was a. Uh, SIP, School Improvement Plan, which was, uh, submitted is, uh, being surveyed also tomorrow, uh, by the Department of Ed and, uh. With drones for new windows and roof? Was that roof window? I know it was windows.
Doors. Doors.
Doors, windows and doors. And that's the report of the Finance and Lessup Committee.
What are the wishes of the committee? We need, we need to accept the report and adopt the recommendations. Do I hear a motion on that?
So.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Almeida. Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I respectfully ask that I vote, uh, present on voucher number one, four, five, five, seven. In the amount of two thousand nine hundred seventy dollars that appears on page six.
Thank you. The maker of the motion is okay with that? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Wendy, did you note that, please? Thank you. On the motion, roll call vote, Mrs. Fagan, please.
Yes, Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Sousa?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Next is the Unit A Teachers Subcommittee, and that's Mr. Sousa. Uh, the, uh, Unit A Subcommittee. Uh, myself, Mrs. Fagan. Mrs. Almeida and Mr. Cabral, Attorney Mitchell and other members of the leadership team. Been on multiple dates, ten, ten thirteen, ten fifteen and ten twenty. And I'm pleased and proud to announce that we have a tentative agreement. On the hybrid learning plan with the TEA. And that is the Unit A Subcommittee Report.
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mrs. Fagan, please call the roll.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Sousa?
Yes. Oh, and before I go on to the next item, I just want to, I don't, I, I usually don't correct a, a professor, but, um. Mr. Martin stated the high school. It's the alternative high school roof that was being there, not the Taunton High School roof. I just wanted to let the record show that.
Well, I didn't take very good notes because I was writing very fast.
I understand that, Mr., uh, Mr. Martin. Sorry about that. I just wanted the people out there to hear. It wasn't the Taunton High School. It's the alternative high school, Yocuhannet Building.
Well, it wasn't math-related. That's why I got it wrong.
Believe me, I'm right there with you. I understand that. I understand that. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the Unit B Administrative Subcommittee, uh, Mr. Fiori.
Eric Lithave and I have signed a memorandum of agreement.
Dude, does the, is that the, is that the memorandum of agreements in the packet? Did we vote on that yet, Mr. Fiori?
No, I'm not, I'm not sure if they have voted on it yet either.
Mr. Cabral, do we need to vote on that tonight?
Uh, I mean, I believe it's, it's been approved. The TAA, TAA has ratified and we have agreement, so it'd be appropriate to approve it.
Thank you. Do I hear, um, Mr. Fiori, could you add that, uh? What we'll do is we'll accept your report and we'll vote on it separately. A chair will entertain a motion to accept his, uh, Unit B Subcommittee Report.
So moved.
Second.
We hear, we have a motion in a second. Mrs. Fagan, please call the rule on accepting the report.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Sousa?
Yes. The chair will entertain a motion to. Accept and adopt the memorandum of agreement with Unit B.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made in second. Mrs. Fagan, please call the roll.
Yep, Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Palowski?
Present.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Um, uh, Mrs. Almeida?
Present.
That was a yes, right? Mr. DeMello? And.
Almeida said present. Uh, I say yes.
Okay. Mrs. Sousa?
Yes, and for the record, Wendy, uh, Mr. Ma, uh, excuse me, Mr. Palowski and Mrs. Almeida are present. Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is the Custodian Subcommittee. Mrs. Almeida?
As I stated before, we reached a tentative agreement with the, uh, Custodians. They ratified the contract. We, um, signed the pro, contract and we need, uh. Motion from the school committee to accept the memorandum of agreement as present.
I think what we'll do is we'll accept the report and then we'll adopt the, we'll adopt the record, we'll adopt the memorandum of agreement. So.
My motion was to do everything at once, Mr. Mr. Sousa.
And I made a motion to approve it, to adopt their recommendation.
Okay.
Well, let's see, Mrs. Almeida gave the report. I made a motion to accept and adopt the recommendations.
Of the report, which is to sign them, which is the memorandum of agreement is included in there. Did you get all that, Wendy? Thank you. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Fagan. Our roll call vote, Mrs. Fagan, please.
Hey, Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Sousa?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is new business. Do we have any new business? Uh, Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, it came to my, uh, attention, uh, through some folks that reached out to me. That, um, they're interested in formulating a district improvement plan with family and community input. Now, what, when that was told to me, uh, I, I kind of tied it into the strategic plan. That, uh, of course, is on our action list, which we'll be reviewing shortly. So, Mr. Cabral, could you explain to me, so I can go back and explain. Uh, more, more details about a district improvement plan, if it aligns with a strategic plan or if it's totally independent?
Uh, usually a district improvement plan in my work as an educator has usually been driven by the state. When the state cites deficiencies, they would ask us to create an improvement plan in which they would want to know what remedies or what actions we're going to take. To correct areas of need, areas of concern. Uh, that's usually done by an audit, uh, which we've had several done. During my time in Taunton as an Assistant Superintendent and even as Superintendent. The strategic plan, uh, which was again part of the entry work that I did my first year. And also was is aligned to my goals, uh, which were interrupted last year. Uh, aligned to the strategic plan, which is where we, where parents, community members, educators. Educational leaders have shared with me where they believe the district should be heading in the future. All that information was compiled and from that information, we created buckets. Or we really whittled it down to what are the key areas that we want to see addressed in the next five to ten years. So I believe the strategic plan, uh, will satisfy the improvement plan and the improvement plans that I've been involved in, again. Was usually initiated by DESI when they come in and perform audits.
So at the moment, we're not deficient. In any of, in anywhere within, within the district, is, is that?
I mean, I can speak for special education and Mrs. Perry have, had to address the state when an audit that was done last year. And, uh, I think we actually reported out that there were different milestones in which they had to report data, submit data to the NSE in order to be compliant. Uh, we've had an end of the year report, uh, which is done by a third-party auditor, which found, you know, we spent our finances correctly, our, our monies correctly last year. So I don't want to come out and say, yes, we are deficient and no, we're not deficient. But DESI has not reached out to us to say that there are areas that we need to correct. And, uh, again, we're very reflective in Taunton. We know that there are areas we need to improve on. But that's why we formed the Social Emotional Learning Input Team, because that's an area that we want to improve for our students. And now, again, that's tied to. Guidance, Adjustment Council Psychologists, and it's also tied to discipline. So that's something that we are, that's ongoing work and why we adopted a curriculum. So. If this group, uh, where individuals from this group would like to speak to me, I can fill them in on my work. Uh, as far as the strategic plan and where I see the district heading or what people, or what the community stakeholders, educational stakeholders shared with me. School, school board members shared with me my first-year superintendent and where this, where they'd like, the direction they'd like to see the district heading.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, Mr. DeMello. Thank you. Uh, any more new business? Uh, Mr. Palowski?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Through you to Mr. Cabral. Um, so, Mr. Cabral, last, last year throughout remote learning, um, we conducted surveys. So we collected data from students, parents and teachers. Um, and I, I know there was a lot of information in there. So if you could speak to, um, what we have done with that data. Um, maybe problems that we've identified and corrective actions that we've put in place, um, for this year in remote learning. And then if you could build on that, um, how have we or how do we intend to, um, collect quality data from our families, uh, for the live experience of both. Remote learning and then into hybrid learning, uh, so that we can reflect on that and then, uh, make continuous improvement as we're going along.
Well, everything that we've done for our remote plan and our hybrid plan is based on the data that we received from my parents last spring. I mean, that information is what's driving, you know, the purchase of all this technology, the purchase of all this curriculum, the professional development we're giving our teachers. So, um, you know, we use that information because that information is what drove all the task forces when they met. So, um. It's used, it was used. And if you look at what we're doing, and again, I'm, I don't want to compare us to other communities, but if you look at what we're doing. I think you might find that our plan's a little different than what other communities are doing, whether they're urban or suburban. So, um. I think, I hope that answers your question. It's, it was used to do everything that we are doing now. The apps that the teachers recommended, you know, the amount of engagement. Uh, making sure that teachers were engaging with kids, communicating, using a common communication with the reminder. That all came from the surveys. So, um, if people don't feel like that information was used, uh, I'd be happy to explain how it was. So again, like Peer Deck. Using Google Chat as our platform, that all came from the survey with our teachers and with our parents. And then, and moving forward, I would, I would ask that the committee, uh, be mindful. That we're about to enter hybrid and that all we've been focused on since you've been in remote is preparing for hybrid. That you give us a little time to get caught up in our day jobs. Before we start, uh, soliciting information on how the remote plan works and how the hybrid plan is working. So I do know some school systems that are a little bit ahead of us. Have done such surveys and they're great at sharing that with us and then we can create one that's, uh, you know, that's geared to Taunton. And get that information to you at a later date. But again, if that's something that you want me and my team to spend our time on. I mean, if that's the form of emotion, we'll do it. But I would ask that you be mindful that, um, you know, we're a little bit behind in some of the things we normally do. Normally at school committee meetings, I try to bring in a presentation, you know, to engage you in what's going on in the system. We just haven't been able to do that because I'm being mindful of teachers, uh, and their time. So again, just. If that's what you want me to do and that's a form of emotion, I'll happily do it. But just please be considerate of my time and also the leadership's team time. As we, uh, you know, adjust to life in the hybrid model and try to get caught up on some of those things that we're behind. And for example, Mrs. Monahan. Is trying to fa, finish an end-of-the-year report, which is due October thirtieth, you know, and that's a financial snapshot for fiscal twenty, uh, ninety-four, ninety-six million dollars worth of expenses. Now, Mr. Barata has professional development that he's trying, trying to line up and he usually is at the forefront of the survey work. So again, if that's something you want us to do, we'll do it. And I just ask you, you give us a little bit of time to, uh, you know, get this rolling, make the adjustments that need to be made, and then we can report back. What I'd like to do. In the near future is bring back a middle school principal, elementary school principal and high school principal, even maybe some teachers from those different levels and talk about, you know, what those experiences were. Because I think Monday, if you like watching any of those restaurant-type shows like Guy Fieri, like I do, Monday is going to be our stress test. You know, we're going to. Be open, uh, restaurant. All the students coming in, that's going to be a stress test and it's not going to be perfect. I think we all need to understand it's not going to be perfect. There's much planning. And thought and effort went into it. There're going to be some bumps, there're going to be some hiccups, and that's why we need that time to make those adjustments. And again. I'm not telling you anything that I haven't heard from other superintendents. It's going to be stressful on Monday and we're going to need everyone's patience to work out all the bugs because there're going to be a lot of bugs.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Cabral. No, that, I, I, that was a very, that was a very good explanation and, uh. Like I, I know that that stuff has gone on. I, I think, I think I wanted a, a good explanation so that all the people with questions can, can illustrate that. So I, I appreciate your, your, your reply to that. Thank you.
All set, Mr. Palowski?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Uh, next item on the agenda, name, I don't see, oh, Ms. Doherty, I'm sorry. Ms. Doherty?
Yes, thank, oh, thank you. I'm sitting back in my chair, so you can't see me, right? Uh, so just to follow on with the conversation about collecting data, uh, so there's a lot of data that's been collected. We have our strategic plan on the back burner. Obviously with COVID nineteen, uh, we were distracted from focusing on developing a strategic plan. The superintendent's evaluation is forthcoming, so there's a certain kind of data that we would expect as school committee members. Uh, your, your, uh, own assessment, uh, as one of those things. Uh, there's also the task force group, seven or eight of them that were formed. Uh, sometime in the summer and I'm, I'm, and I think that the data that they've collected and recommendations that they have made would be meaningful and useful. Uh, to, uh, bring into the conversation around, uh, strategic planning. So what has happened with, uh? Task force? Are they still meeting? Will they be developing reports to report back to us? Have they already done so? And you're, I think particularly of the Karen Reagan, the nurse, uh, group about the health and safety of kids. Certainly those recommendations are. Uh, integrated into the work that we're doing to bring our kiddos back. So just where are they?
So some of the task forces continue to meet. Uh, some of the fat task forces have taken a step back as we finalize our plans for hybrid. And the task forces, I mean, their input is in our fifty-one page or whatever. I can't remember how many pages our document is, but their input is embedded.
Fifty-eight.
Thank you. I shortened myself seven pages. Thanks, Greg. So, uh, uh, their input is embedded in that document. And unfortunately, some of the task forces, I mean, that document probably could have been like another fifteen, twenty pages as we tried to cull it down. Into a manageable and workable document. So all their input was gathered and put into it. Um, I would have to take a look at some of the recommendations to see where, if it would fit into a strategic plan. Um, but I would say, I mean, where we might see a fit would be with technology. I think as I joked last meeting, Mrs. Blenau's five-year plan for technology was accomplished in three months. You know, we, because of COVID. So, yeah, so some of that stuff could be embedded. Um, but again, if you want to know what happened to the task forces or where their input went, it's in the fifty-eight-page document. But again, if you want to know what happened to the task forces or where their input went, it's in the 58-page document and then some, as Mr. Barata reminded me a few weeks ago, there's probably about 15 or 20 pages that could have been added to the plan, but we, again, we tried to keep it concise.
Just if I might, Mr. Chairman, so it, it might be well over time to conversations to come and can you hear me now?
Yeah, go ahead. Oh, just started, just started. I think, I, we didn't get what you said.
Just a suggestion that rather than having us read 50 pages or 20 pages, having the folks who were the chair, chairs of those task forces might come to a Zoom meeting to give a brief presentation of where they find themselves in terms of the work that they've done. I know they've worked really hard to come up with whatever it is at whatever stage they are. And so that work should, I think, be recognized by the school committee and we might find the information to be useful. I have a second question if I might. All between this and something else, but feedback about student progress to parents under ordinary surgery, et cetera. I'm wondering if there is a universal consistent way that we provide feedback to families across the district. I heard a student council person cite the use of School Brains, for example, to find out just where she is or where the students are at the high school level. So can you talk about maybe, Mr. Cabral, Mr. Barata might talk about creating a consistent approach to providing families with feedback about the status of their children's learning?
Mr. Cabral?
Just with regards to grades, sorry, Mr. Doherty, in and out, was this with regards like progress reports on student grades?
Well, it might not even be grades, but how, how are, how is the communication, what is the communication link between families and school to have families have a conversation about the progress that their children are making? So great, great would be provided consistently, I'm sure, you know?
So we adopted one universal communication tool, which is Remind. So parents can utilize the Remind tool to communicate with their child's teacher. Parents can also utilize email to communicate with the child's teacher. And we do have benchmarks, milestones in which grades are to be reported to, to families regarding the progress of the student, which is usually the midway of the term. And then we have parent conferences coming up in November, which we're going to be, which are going to be held differently. They're going to be probably held remote or they're probably going to be done by phone because we're limited to bring in people. So at the middle school and high school, School Brains, I may be confusing my dates, but I believe, I may be mixing my grade levels, but I know at the middle school and the high school, I'm pretty positive that we'll be utilizing School Brains in the portal to share grades with families. If not, so now in the very near future, possibly second semester, the latest, for parents to be able to log into the portal and see where their child's, their kids are grade wise. At the elementary level, it's a little different because of the number of classes that the teachers are prepping for. So the communication there would be, work would be through the Remind app, through notices for progress reports. That's how a parent would find out how their child is performing. And obviously, I mean, parents are encouraged to maintain that communication with their child's teacher at all levels, whether it's by phone, email or utilizing the Remind app. And the reason we chose the Remind app is because we're able to archive those communications in the cloud. So we have, we have a backup if needed.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Doherty. I hope your connection gets a little bit better. But sometimes that happens. Moving on to unfinished business, action items. The, number one is the school committee planner review. Everyone in the packet, Mr. Cabral, you just want to go over that?
No, that should look similar to last year where I put together a planner. And again, one difference you'll notice is that I have not had a chance to plug in the presentations that you can anticipate. Again, I'm trying to be mindful of our teachers who normally present, or the department heads who normally present as their first year teachers all over again. You know, they're preparing lessons to teach remotely. So again, we'll plug in those presentations. I will say, we'll ask you to focus your attention. In January, we're, we're, we're going to start revving up for budget for next year for fiscal '22. So we're looking at January, having our principals' budget meeting. We're looking at a retreat on the 27th, which I'm hoping we can do in person. If not, we'll have to do it via Zoom. And then we'll have our evening budget forum on the 28th and then we'll have our morning budget forum on the 29th. And then we've scheduled, we flipped the document to February, we'll try to have our school committee budget workshop in February, which should, should align right around the time the governor releases his budget. So we should know how much money will we be receiving from the state hopefully in January because he's supposed to release his budget third week in January is when we're supposed to receive the new budget for the fiscal year. So that should work out well. That'll give us about a month to let you know where we stand and if we have any additional funding to prioritize some budget priorities for the school system. And so again, it's a working document. You'll probably see this document revised and in the packet in the future as we continue to add things to it. And if you have any conflicts with any of those meetings, please let Wendy know, especially regarding to the budget in those forums. Please let Wendy know. And if there's enough of a conflict, we may be, we'll look at rescheduling where a majority of the members can attend. It's never going to be perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. The next item on the agenda is the action items. I don't see any that can be, that we need to take off at this moment, if anyone else has. Okay, thank you. The next item is critical items not reasonably, I'm sorry, Mr. DeMello.
That's on the next agenda item.
Are you saying critical items?
Yes.
Let me just read it. Critical items not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance. Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, three points, three quick ones. I, I believe the superintendent already addressed the technology. I know that there are constant emails coming out regarding interruption. So the upgrade's been made from one to 10 gigs or whatever that thing is. It's all set, beautiful. That's number one. Number two, I've been getting many calls about EBT cards being distributed to families. Some families are telling me that they're not even qualified, but they're getting $135 or $136. Could you please elaborate about that? And if they're legit and what do they spend them?
Yeah, they, they are legit, they are legit. So Mrs. Papa has worked very hard to make sure all students or all schools that qualify to be breakfast in the classroom or free. So right now, the whole district qualifies. The family we see is because your child's school, maybe not your family per se, but your child's school qualifies. And that funding can be used to purchase groceries for your family as intended.
Great. So that's number two. Thank you for answering that. And the last one, I think, is a pressing one. I'm aware that our city council colleagues met in chambers last night. When are we anticipating to go back in person?
Well, that's a good question. We had a, we had a CAD drawing done of the meeting place and as of right now, it's a thousand people, excuse me, a thousand square feet for eight people. But right now, we had, we had it laid out, so there was social spacing, social distance spacing between them all. But Mr. Cabral and I are still discussing it because right now, we can't fit everybody in the room and everybody be on TV. So we're still trying to figure out how we can do it and still meet with the, and we also have to meet with the Board of Health on any plan that we have. So right now, because we were working on this hybrid plan and going back, we're still, we still don't have a clear plan and we'll still be meeting by, via Zoom until we can talk to the Board of Health because they're, they're the key sign off on it. Right now, the other thing too is we have to have a clear space for the public. So the, in our space, the public is, it's kind of tight for the public. We have to make sure the public is safe and we're safe because we can't limit the amount of public that come in. If 30 people want to come in, we have to have space for 30 people. And that's, and that's, that's part of the issue too. And Mr. Cabral, did I hit all the, all the points that we talked about?
Yeah, I believe you've touched on all the points. So Mrs. Hartung was going to work on the rendering and then Mr. Jakes was going to configure the furniture and the cameras to make sure it works. And then obviously, once we get that all finalized and buttoned up, I will share it with the Board of Health, get their blessing and get their sign off. And if there's a way to work around public input, if we can continue utilizing the phones or utilizing email, maybe that's a workaround public input since we're not allowed, since we're, and again, want to be mindful that we can accommodate the public if they want to attend.
So, so using City Hall is not a possibility, the chambers?
Yeah, you know.
That's used for other boards and organizations.
I could always inquire about the use of City Hall if that's something that this group would want.
That's
myself, selfishly for myself, if we're going to meet in person, I would prefer that we meet in our chambers just because Mrs. Moynihan and everyone, if they needed access. But if the wishes are to reach out to the city council or the mayor and ask about the use of the chambers, I can do that tomorrow.
Let's, let's continue on with our plan and see if we can meet in our space. I think it's, it's consistent to make sure all of our leadership team is there and all the access to the data and information is there.
Okay, thank you.
We'll keep, we'll keep, we'll keep working on that, Greg. See, see if we can get it. I was hoping for January at the, you know, realistically, but we have to, we have to jump through some hoops for us. So but there is, there is a, a talk about it in the plan to try to move in that direction, hopefully, to keep everybody safe. That's the most important thing. Thank you. And in the public as well. Mrs. Almeida?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if we do meet again, and not virtually, will there be a mechanism for people who are compromised be able to meet virtually with the school committee?
That will be part of the discussion that we'll have and make sure we have the technology for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. No more critical items. I'm going to move on to L and I'm just going to look at my other monitor here so I can read it. This is the executive session. We are, the, we will need a motion to go into executive session and the, the motion is going to be to discuss with legal counsel in executive session concerning the ongoing discussions with, with respect to terms and conditions of the existing transportation contract because an open session may have adverse effects on the school department's legal position. And we will, we will reconvene in open session and the Chair will entertain a motion to go into executive session. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Fiore. And Mrs. Fagan, our roll call vote, please.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Pulowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes. We will go into executive session. I'm not sure. Thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
I hear, I hear a motion and a second. Mrs. Fagan, please make, call the role to come out of executive session.
Mr. Doherty? Mr. Doherty?
Yes, yes.
Pulowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes. There was one motion made in executive session on a seven, a seven to one vote to pay the Bloom Bus Company for services rendered. And we will again call the roll call vote on the motion to pay for services rendered. Mrs. Fagan, please call the role again.
Yes. Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Pulowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
No.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes. Did you get that all, Wendy? All right, thank you. The next the next item on the, is press time. The Chair will not entertain that motion. Press time, there's no press time. The Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Martin votes?
I made the motion.
Second.
Second. On the roll call vote, Mrs. Fagan.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Oh my God, Mr. Pulowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
I guess so, yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes, thank you, everyone. Appreciate the, the hard work. Have a great week. Safe, please.
Thank you.